So we don't want to hold them up.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, but to go back to them and let them know, we are not going to hold you up, this is what we are going to do. But informing them as to what, if the development were to annex, when it becomes contiguous, this is what could happen, and perhaps they would, at that time, say, yeah, hey, we want to do that.
My read, and correct me if I'm wrong Nancy, is Nancy is basically saying, we've got a really great opportunity to market ourselves to these surrounding, because of the superior services that we can perform. And it's not just water and sewer, it's also the city sewer, excuse me, not city, the city services that we perform, whether it's our sanitation, whether it's our police, whether it's our fire, whether it's just dealing with people in the city, because this happens to be a very pleasant city to deal with, and that maybe we should be promoting that also, to kind of encourage these people to want to come in and join our family.
Yeah, let them know, let them know what they're, what they're missing, and, and take this as an opportunity, it's like when you're in sales and marketing, and you want to get somebody to, to accept what you're trying to propose, you'll use any opportunity you can to get in their face, and this is an opportunity to get in their face. And so you use that as an opportunity to meet with these homeowners, yeah, you use that as an opportunity to meet with these homeowners groups, to say, hey, look at this. So.
I have a question. So if they are already contiguous, and say they don't have a sewer, but now they want one?
They will have to annex.
Okay, because this says that, where does it say, that the?
Assuming we want the property.
Yeah, it says that the property does not meet the statutory requirements, but if it does meet the statutory requirements, then we would get a full annexation agreement before we would provide them the sewer.
Yes. Now, again, it is discretionary, but the problem is that, in order to get those properties that aren't currently contiguous, to be able to annex in at the appropriate time, you have to get each individual property that currently is contiguous, so that then you can have the opportunity to make that argument down the road.
To get connected, yes, got it. Any other questions, discussion?
How did that work with Emerald Point? Was, how, how did it appear over here in this, in the middle?
They appeared to be in the city through a, years and years ago, saying they were contiguous by the?
The water.
Water.
Submerged lands, submerged lands.
Don't ask me to explain it.
Smart these Yankees.
Good question, don't ask them to explain it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So how do we handle a situation on Almar, where on one side of the street it is a city, and the other side of the street it's the county, and?
If they want the sewer?
And we have undeveloped properties across the street, and so now somebody buys the property and wants to build a house, and so will we annex those individual properties that's kind of speckled?
If we want it, yes.
Okay.
If we want it, it's discretionary.
Okay.
If they're in the way of getting some other area that we want, yeah.
Which could work to their benefit.
Absolutely, lower taxes.
Okay, anybody have any?
You're going to bring something up, San Sebastian.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, thank you for reminding me, I've slept since then.
I have my notes.
Last year, we had the, we had brought before us, and maybe I misread it a little bit too, the neighborhood of San Sebastian, a very large portion of them, actually probably a majority portion of that community, wanted to acquire sewer from, from our, from our utility area. And in the process of reading that, because they're part of the county, it came up that we had to first agree that we would be willing to do it, and then it would be up to the county to come to us to say, and contract us with to do it. But it was pointed out to me by an illustrious philosopher of our city government, that we really didn't come down hard on the fact that we really wanted them, okay? I would really like to see them come in, okay? I thought we were, we were kind of, our hands were tied because of the county, so this might be the type of community that we might want to let it be known, that we could be receptive if they were to want to bring in. It, it has lots of other implications, it's not just about bringing them into the utility area, it also has to do with the, the health, the improving health, maintaining the momentum of the proving, improving health of our harbor, which is our biggest asset, because these communities are on septic. We are in a geography that doesn't really lend itself to septic. Many of the septic systems here are actually on top of the ground, and they got a mound of dirt over them, because the water table's so high, okay? So that's all getting into our harbor eventually, one way or the other. It's one thing to put a septic system on even three quarters of an acre, it's another thing to put five septic systems on that same acre. It's a whole different, different dynamic, it's a different chemistry and physics. So we have, I think, a point to make of encouraging these people that are on septic to come into our utilities area and into our family as a city of Punta Gorda, for a number of reasons. So San Sebastian is a neighborhood that I think would be appropriate maybe for us to approach and see if they would like to revisit that situation, and maybe us be a little bit more definitive of walking them in, in with this type of ordinance.
Nancy?
When we had that discussion, I brought up at the time, that if they were to be contiguous, that it would be a different decision, so we had that discussion at that time.
Right.
And so, and it's one of the reasons why it's important for us to be working in lock step with Charlotte County Utilities on a sewer, septic sewer conversion plan, so that we don't have the county commission then turn around and change the decision that the neighborhood voted for. So, you know, I don't disagree with you, they're just not contiguous at this time, so.
And I think what the county is doing, they kind of took a pause, we've had to do that too, and they're putting together the master plan, which I think is the right way to go.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, there's a laid out plan, and this is how we're going to proceed, and then people know, and, you know, I think everybody at this point has accepted the science, that, you know, this is what really does need to happen, especially in this area, not.
Well, at least we have.
Yes, we have, we have, and they've had Dr. LaPointe at their meetings too.
Yes.
So, you know, we're moving in that direction, I just think with the pushback, it's been a little bit slower than everybody would like, but I, you know, our utility staff attends all those meetings, and is, you know, involved in that process, so I think we'll get there, it's just going to take a little bit longer than what we would like.
Oh, yeah, I understand, it's never going to happen as quickly as I would like to see it, just from my pers, my personal perspective, but I think that, relative to what Nancy was bringing forward, I think it behooves us to put out a message, that we would be very interested in working with other communities to become, say, contiguous of San Sebastian, if, you know, if it's just a matter of a couple lots, try to figure out how to work, that we put it out there, that we want to work with these communities to utilize our utilities area. We have the capacity.
Yeah.
And we're in great shape that way, I'm here, but I think we're probably running about forty percent capacity of our waste treatment plant right now, which means that we can bring on a lot before we have to actually start considering to expand it. So it's not that we have to make large capital expenditures to utilize these facilities even more.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the agreement, the pre-proposed annexation, it's a pre-annexation agreement, right?
It's the form.
Yeah, the form, the form.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the form, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. Okay, next we have two discussions, the first of the Terry Tubbs Show, the first of which is discuss minor amendments to regulations for property maintenance.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design. This came up as a result of a resident that was sent a courtesy letter for a dirty roof, and he pointed out that his walls and other elements of the house were not dirty, and therefore, the code was not applicable to his situation. And so we started looking at the section real closely, to see what else might be, need to be tweaked a little bit. One was perency, where we talked about trees that could not be over twelve inches in height. It was just not written in, written in, in a logical manner. When we went to section nine, addressing public nuisances, which is also basically a property maintenance section, we found that a lot of it was redundant, some of it had development standards in there that are covered in chapter twenty-six, and didn't need to be in the maintenance section, because they were actually development standards. And when we talked about the building walls, originally, the, that code section called it out by the fronts, the sides, the rears, and there was really no need for it to be broken into different sections. So, you know, by combining it all together, it just shortens it, the intent of all of these does not change, it's just tweaking them so that the wording hopefully is more correct.
I guess, I understand where he was coming from, I, my hesitation would be, if we just say, a structure shall have no more than twenty percent of its roof, I mean, twenty percent of your roof, first of all, that's a major judgment call, and second of all, I mean, that's, that's a pretty small, not that I want to see dirty roofs, but I don't know how far we're, we're going to take that, I think that's why we had the roof and the wall and whatever else.
We get a lot of complaints on the dirty roofs, and generally, what we find, depending on how the house faces, north, south, east, or west, one side of the house may not get sun, a lot of times it's on the backside, the canal side of the house, where we get the complaint from the resident across the canal, where, you know, it's clear that, you know, if you're on that side looking at it from that direction, that the entire back of the house roof is dirty. The code officers do not go out looking for roofs unless they are in a section, somebody's complained about a roof on a certain street. Well, that code officer then is going to make sure that they do check all of the roofs on that street to, so that that person who got complained about is not a singled out, and that all of them are maintained properly. They aren't looking to see, well, maybe that's twenty percent for the sake of writing a courtesy letter on it.
I just don't know, I can live with the twenty percent.
Well, that, that's been in there since 2005.
Gary.
Having been an old car restorer, fixer-upper, we used to have what were called twenty footers, those were cars that looked really beautiful twenty feet away until you got up close to them. It seems to me that there's another issue here, because I remember when we built our house, and we were looking at tiles, some of the tiles were made to look dirty to begin with, they would have a little bit of black streaked into them, because that was the effect that they wanted, and from across the canal, I can also envision somebody having an appearance of a dirty roof, when in fact it wasn't, because it was the way the tile was made, and it still would annoy somebody. So I just see that as a, at what point do you determine the twenty percent inspection? I find it a little bit problematic, but not necessarily unnecessary, because you don't want the neighborhoods to deteriorate, and you want people to maintain it. There is a, a house, for example, across the canal from, from me, it used to be a pink house, on my side, it's a yellow house, and on the canal side, where we have some friends that never liked the pink to begin with, it's still a pink house. So they've never gotten around to completely, and this has been several years, now I haven't complained about it, and I'm not complaining about it now, so I'm not going to say, but I'm just saying this, you, you get those types of things too, and I don't know how we enforce them, because.
Well, there's no prohibition about the color of your house, you can paint each wall a different color, should you choose to do so.
But it, but it still has that same visual annoyance, potentially, that just a dirty house looked at too, versus having, you know, junk student around a lot and so forth, that's something that's, that's pretty easy, I think, for us to ascertain and go, it's a little problematic for me.
I, I agree with Gary, I think the twenty percent is very subjective, and it's, it's very much some, one person's opinion versus another, and, you know, I too have a house across the street from me, that has the tile that's got the black embedded in it, and in fact, after the hurricane, they didn't replace the roof, they only replaced a few tiles, and they only replaced them with plain green tile that doesn't have the black in it. So you can see which ones are embedded with it, and which ones aren't, and it's very clearly different. It's, it's a very subjective decision, and it is certainly something I think a citizen could fight back about, because it's, you know, it's, it's your opinion versus somebody else's opinion on a lot of these cases.
Is there a percentage that council would prefer that?
But how do you decide what twenty percent is?
The, the code officers, generally, when they are looking at it, it's way beyond twenty percent usually, it's the most of either one side of the house, and as in the instance where there are some multicolored ones, but they will check the entire house, you know, if it looks dirty on one side, a lot of times you can tell if somebody has vents, because right behind the vents, the roof will be clean, but the dirt has gone around it, and you can see, clearly see, that the rest of the roof is dirty because of that clean area behind a vent that's on a roof. It's not something that the officers ever take lightly when, when citing, you know, the dirty roofs, it's, it's a touchy subject, it's one that, there's certain roofs, for some reason, get dirty faster than others.
I can tell you why. Because I own a house in PGI that has tile that is not sealed, it has a very porous surface, and as you and I talked about a couple months ago, it has to be pressure washed every year and a half to two years, because it gets black, it just gets embedded in that tile, and you cannot get it out, and even with pressure washing, it doesn't stay clean. And it's very expensive for me to have to have it cleaned every two years, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm thinking, I think twenty percent is a little bit too rigid, just my personal opinion, I think if you're looking at forty or fifty percent of a roof being dirty, that's one thing, but twenty percent, I don't know, I think that might be a little bit too stringent, in my opinion.
That's why I think they were tied together, that's what, that's how I would have read it. So if we're, if we're going to put the oars in there, we have to come, I think we have to come up with a different percentage. Because I could see where they were saying, well, there could be mold on the roof, and then down the wall, and then somewhere else too.
That's not.
That's too much, no?
That typically does not occur.
Well, it seems like that's the way that that was written. I don't know, I'm struggling.
Well, no, I think, I think, in order to improve the ordinance, so that it is at least clearer as to what the intention is, and from the discussion, there's no reason why you can't change the percentage, we're just asking for direction, for an ordinance that will come back to you for, for future consideration.
I'd be in favor of changing the percentage, and, and having it be a little bit less subjective and more defined, I think this, it's one person's opinion versus another right now.
And that's true, but, and that's where we, the code enforcement board comes into play. Again, as, as Terry's pointed out, inspectors are probably going to be conservative in their estimates, but nevertheless, and there's ways, you know, that, that they've been able to calculate roughly the square footage of a roof or the, of a wall, and then determine, you know, whether it's twenty percent or whatever. And, and if the property owner disputes that, bring it to code enforcement, and then you've got a board that will decide what the facts are. But I, like I said, I, I don't have any problem if we change that percentage.
Does anybody have an idea what?
I think probably just, we could come back to this with more thought, I mean, right this moment, probably, we'd just be throwing a number out.
So why don't we just, we can put this on our, get some feedback?
Well, we can go through the process, the public hearing process, we have to go to the planning commission for this?
Yes.
Planning commission can have input.
Land Development Committee.
You know, one of the things that, if, if there's a, a non-conforming structure, for example, that has been allowed to continue, until it gets damaged to a certain percentage, in which case it needs to be brought into current code, is that percentage fifty percent?
Yes.
So, you know, fifty percent is, is a common dividing point, that would require some type of affirmative action. So we could say, a structure shall have no more than fifty percent of its exterior walls or, and then through the public hearing process, if there's, if there's input that suggests that that may be too great, then you can modify it accordingly.
And I think too, that, that is a more clear cut, less subjective, I would say, because if half the roof is dirty, okay, it's already timed, like, now we're, you know, it's a little bit less of, okay, this is a courtesy, you got twenty percent, okay, you've got half of your roof, and now it's time to, to address it. Because I could see, like, somebody, if you had a neighbor, the minute yours starts getting a little bit ugly looking, they could say, oh, she got the twenty percent, I mean, I know you're saying that we don't, we don't enforce it that way, but there are people out there that are like that, so.
We have one, yeah, we have.
They drive around and they look.
Well, that's what happened with my house that I own, I mean, it's complaint driven, and it was a complaint filed with the city.
And quite frankly, I think most people have a better understanding of what fifty percent is than twenty percent.
I would be okay with that, Nancy.
Yeah.
Would you say fifty percent of one side? And the reason why I say this is because, to Terry's point, we were on our boat, went around the house next door, house looked great, got on the north side of the house, and the whole, the mold is just all over, and the couple didn't even know about it, because they don't have a boat, they had no way of, they don't go out and look, so they have no way of knowing, and we, we let them know it was moldy, and they took care of it, but.
It still wouldn't have been half the roof?
No, because it was only on one side of the house.
So it would have been twenty-five percent.
It would have been twenty-five percent, so therefore, they could have said, well, it's only twenty-five percent, so what? And when in fact, that roof, that side of the house looked really.
Depends on what, what side the house gets more sun on, in a lot of cases.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, you'd have a side that is completely not clean, and.
I, I think what staff is tasked for is to make, to do it so, we're the bar of what citizens are. And I think, I think that Terry and her group are tasked with, you know, making it's, make sense and clear to us, I just, we're talking about roofs and fifty percent and twenty-five percent, and I've got a house that was built after Charlie, and I have a very convoluted shaped roof because of the coating, because of the hurricanes, where I used to have two flat pieces that was my roof on my nineteen sixties house, I probably have a dozen or more facets to my house, and how are you going to say, is it, is it fifty percent, twenty percent or fifty percent of each facet? You know, each one has a different size, they're not necessarily facing in the same direction, and, it gets really convoluted.
Well, and on top of that, if I might add.
Yes.
You might have something that is only twenty percent discolored, but it is so badly discolored that it's an eyesore, versus somebody could have a house that's fifty, the roof is fifty percent discolored, but it's just, you know, you may not even notice it until you look closely, so that's the problem of trying to regulate aesthetics. So the more criteria you put in, the more difficult the task is, so I would like to keep it kind of simple, we, we felt like we needed to make a change, for clarification purposes, making it fifty percent versus twenty percent might be a useful change as well, but I don't know that we want to get too far field from what it currently suggests.
Nancy?
Should we ask for comment from the code compliance and, as well, that committee, so that we have a number of committees that would weigh into this, to see what would work?
Thank you, yeah, that, it might be helpful to get additional input, Nancy does have a very valid point, with one side being really, really bad, but the rest of the roof being basically okay, and we're getting complaints like crazy because of that one bad side, but if we have got the overall percentage too high, there's not going to be a thing we can do about it. And so, you know, we can certainly get more input to see what we have, and then bring that back.
Could you put language in there to what you were fifty percent or as determined to be severe, is there any other, like?
Well, you know, and then that becomes really discretionary, yeah, yeah, and that's what we try to avoid.
What, what's happened now, I mean, to warrant the need for the changes, I mean, are, is it, I mean, are complaints that bad, or like, is it really necessary to modify the code, or?
I, I think Terry, really, why don't you explain what I?
We did have somebody who was cited, because their, their roof is to the point that it does need to be cleaned, and it's a white roof, it's one of those that unfortunately, especially because of the color, it, it does get dirty, every couple of years, it, it just needs cleaned. And the gentleman that owns the house said, there's nothing wrong with my walls or any other elements of the structure, and so therefore, I don't meet the twenty percent, and I don't have to do anything. And so, I don't know if that was complaint driven or not, but that puts us in a position that we aren't going to be able to enforce any dirty roofs unless the house is dirty too, and that very seldom happens.
So it was really, I think, that one paragraph A that was driving our reconsideration, but once we were looking at that, we, we looked at.
Yeah, we looked at everything.
Other provisions that might be worthwhile tinkering with.
Well, then I guess if we could run it through the committees and find out, is the twenty percent the right number?
We can certainly get more input on it, and then bring it back before we actually draft anything.
Yeah, the rest of the stuff I'm okay with.
How about, no, I was going to make a joke.
I was too, I was going to say, it's not such a minor amendment, is it?
Well, we can ask, if, if more than twenty percent of the people on the street complain about it, then we.
Do you, do you want us to bring it back, or should we just get the input?
Well, I think Terry could put together some, do you have photos of, you know, when they go to code, you have photos of the roofs, like the one you were talking about, and the one you were talking about, if we could have some, okay, this is why, you know, justification for why we need the percentage that we need.
Yes, certainly, yeah, the, the code officers have tons of photos of roofs, so.
Yeah, so then we could say, okay, well, this one would fall into an enforcement, and this one would not, so then we could have some idea of where the line could be drawn.
We can.
Maybe twen, maybe twenty percent is, is the right number.
We can certainly do that, and.
And that's really, does anybody have any issues with any of the other changes?
No.
No.
So we'll bring it back.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the wireless communication facilities. This kind of came up as the city attorney was doing some research, we were talking about the ham, radio antennas, which we still need to address, because they are a separate section of the code. However, in his research, the city attorney found some significant changes to the Florida statutes that created issues with the way our ordinance was written. And so he looked at the ordinance and had proposed the changes. A lot of the, in the neighborhood center and other districts, the wireless communication facilities were a use permitted with condition, but because the first condition was a special exception by city council approval, we just moved them from a use with condition to the special exception section of each zoning district. Additionally, they were not originally permitted at all in the city center zoning district, however, that's where we have a lot of wireless activity that occurs, and that's where we were getting the proposal from, actually, it's the Verizon that has made this proposal, to put some stealth type, and what they call them, they kind of intensify the wireless ability in that core area, where they know they've got a lot of users, and yes, they're getting service, but it slows down, because they don't have that extra intensity that they can get by putting these small stealth type of.
They're like booster stations.
Yeah, exactly, that's perfect. Where if they are built into essentially the architecture of the building, they are not going to be something that's like a big ugly tower, it's, it's something that is visually, unless you saw them doing it, you might not even notice that it had been done, but it will improve the service, and given that everything is going wireless, we really need to allow these facilities to occur, it's just a matter that they occur in a manner that is not aesthetically damaging to the character of the city. And that is the intent of what is drafted, and so we wanted to bring this to the city council for direction, that we can move forward with the amendments.
So is this a real proposal?
Yes.
Interesting, Gary.
I just think that this proposal also brings up an issue, as we've, we've charged staff to come to look into the coding in general for city center, and if Market Square gets developed and so forth, we may want to have in that coding, the capability for these types of systems to be cont-
the capability for these types of systems to be controlled in how they, how they're installed and where they're installed and so forth. And it's me, it's, it's going to be necessary for the whole downtown development to begin with, and we prob, wouldn't be a bad idea to, to maybe expand the discussion a little bit more other than just this proposal. For me, the proposal, to me, is we should go forward with it. But we should be cognizant of what happens over the course of the rest of development of Center Center.
This, this is a, actually, I'd say, a normal fixture with any developed downtown, is that you do have your invisible wireless infrastructure. I think it's something we have to have in order to really do what we want to do with Market Square.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I, I think the special exception allows us to take them on a case-by-case basis and, you know, make them show us exactly what they're gonna do and we decide yes or no. I mean, I think that otherwise, we're back to, okay, where can the tower go? How high can it be? Can it do this? Can it do that? Nancy?
Can we make it look like Christmas tree? Is there any fee in charge, fee involved where they're paying?
For a, oh, yeah, if somebody locates on, like, a city facility, yeah, absolutely. There would be an agreement where, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're getting fees for this.
My, my point, my point that I was making though is that the rest of Market Square is developed, that there should be provisions that these, that a developer should also make available appropriate and aesthetically hidden sites to rent to the Verizons and so forth for the installations right out the gate. Because they might put something up and say, yeah, but I don't want that in my building, just like, you know, they may not want to deal with our signage code, so they won't annex it to the city. They may not, they may have a reason saying, nah, I don't even want to consider it, and maybe we should leave a provision that says that it's required that you consider this.
And ultimately, this helps them with their bottom line, because they can rent space, especially if you have, you know, any building that's, has been have line of sight before else, so it means advantageous for everybody.
And, yeah, because now with, you know, mostly things being wireless, the cloud, everything, I mean, the business is needed too. It's not just for people talking on their cellphones, I mean, everybody needs it, so. I, I think this is fine. Are there any changes or modifications? So this will come back as an ordinance? Yep?
Yes.
We'll proceed.
Thank you.
Yeah. I need to give some much further thought to the suggestion that for new construction, we require that they make stuff available on their building for Sprint or some of the others. It's, it's a very good thought, and there's no question that we do things sort of like that in other contexts that are historically necessary. For example, we mandate how many public restrooms they're gonna have and things of that nature. On the technology side of things, I don't know that we have enough of a track record from a court perspective to say whether that would be a taking of private property.
That's why we have you, David.
So, and, and so, I don't want, because, and because the communications industry has such a very good lobby and has our legislature doing things that make it easier for them to do their business, and because our ordinance originally was adopted at a time when the technology was totally different, I don't really want to delay the proposed changes that we have here, which are to bring our current ordinance
Oh, I'm not proposing that at all.
as quickly into, into effect as possible, and we can think of some other, we can...
That's exactly what I'm proposing.
Down the road.
That's exactly what I'm proposing.
And look at what other cities do.
Yeah.
I'm not proposing putting any brakes on what we're discussing here today.
Okay, all right.
Only, only what is going to come before us when we talk about setbacks and all those types of things. I'm just asking that question also.
Yeah, and at that point in time, at that point in time, there may be more of a track record concerning things of that nature, so, okay.
I was just, the wireless is different than the old microwave communication where you had to be in the tallest structure. So, you, you might want to have considered that then, but it's not the same.
Okay, next we're going into recommendation from city officers, Howard.
Citizens Academy is starting next week. It'll be the Administration Day will be the first day, and we'll proceed on to all the other departments, so next Tuesday, I think it starts.
I think so, yes.
Could we have a list of all the participants in advance so that we can see? Who do we know that's going to be in that class, so we can...
Yeah, Public Works, Public Works can send them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Hope.
We'll have them send them out.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
City Attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, under Boards and Committees, vacancies. We have an unexpired term as the Building Board alternate, an unexpired term as a Historic Preservation Advisory Board alternate, and a three-year term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. No nominations this time under appointments. We have a three-year term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two eligible applicants. Here are your voting forms.
And the appointee is Mr. Burage.
Thank you. Okay, we have also an unexpired term on the Code Enforcement Board. We have two eligible applicants.
I get a paper cut.
And the appointee is Mr. Baumann.
And lastly, we have an unexpired term on the Planning Commission. We have three eligible applicants voting for one, please.
Get more patience.
And the appointee is Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you all for your service. Policy and legislation, I don't really have much, do I? Nope. Okay, Councilmember comments, let's go with Jaha.
Nothing, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And now citizens' comments, any topic. Come to the podium, you have three minutes. State your name, please, for the record.
Right, Rosen, I know you've missed my comments, so, a couple of history lessons for you today. The 20% rule goes back, I'm gonna guess, around 2005, 2006. The, a couple of members of the council were adamant against the definition of dirty roofs. And when the ALDR committee met, it was felt that if you talked about a discoloration or disfigurement of any type, it would be appropriate and could be applied to dirty roofs without specifying the same. Then the question was, is how do you do it? And the way the 20% rule came up, if I remember correctly, and Terry and John, I think you were both there, it was at what point does it become noticeable? And somebody said, oh, probably 20%. And that was the number that was used and applied, because it felt it was a time that you could see that there was a dirty surface. It was a highly selective and technical process, so you shouldn't get too involved. History lesson number two, Whipper Will. And I believe it was 2005. There was a property owner that came forth with a proposal that if they could have development go to five stories instead of four, they would purchase the property on Whipper Will, and they had, they took an option for a little over $600,000 on that property. They would take the property that was the old tennis courts for the old association at Marion and Ball Harbor, and oddly enough, there was, and I don't remember the details, up at Ponce Park, there would be public access granted, and at the time, I don't think it was known that the Wildlife Center was on their property. And that presentation came to the council, and a council member said, the city is not for sale, so take your suggestion, and it was withdrawn and the subject went away. But that's the closest case that the Whipper Will property ever came to being owned by the city. And history class is over because the light is flashing.
You still have 40, 40 seconds.
Good morning, Rhonda James. I have a couple things. I was enjoying also the discussion of the Whipper Will project. I was envisioning myself on the bench and with my little dog and whatever, until it came to the part where actually the neighbors don't want any parking, they don't want us to actually be there, they want it for themselves, and we're gonna be, so they don't want me, they don't want my neighbors. And I don't really want my city councilperson approving or caring about projects where my tax dollars are being put into a place that doesn't, you know, facilitate us all being there. And I'm concerned about the, the list of parks that you have. How many others are on that list that have the intention of keeping us out? I'd like you to make sure you go over that list, and that was very bad for my ears and my imagination. Okay, the other thing is, when we're coming across the bridge into Punta Gorda, there's this huge sign, Blue Lives Matter, Gray Lives Matter, Green Lives, whatever color matters. And I see what isn't on the sign, you know, it's what's absent from it. And so Black Lives Matter is certainly not, not on the sign. I do understand that the gentleman wanted to lend his support for law enforcement. I think that that's perfectly fine. If he wanted to do that, he could have said, remember always to support your local police and sheriff, et cetera. But he decided to use Lives Matter. When you're using Lives Matter and you're ignoring Black Lives Matter, anything that followed the movement of Black Lives Matter, which was something that followed the unfortunate murder of a child or a young man after Ferguson, it became argumentative, it became divisive. And this sign is so big, it looks like the city put it on. That's what it looks like to me. Like, you can't really tell, it's on this piece of property, I guess, that is private, but it, it's so darn big. So I don't know if that's the kind of message you really want to give citizens who live here and visitors coming in, that, something that is divisive, I'd like you to think about that.
Citizens' comments, any topic?
Jerry Fallon, PGI. Last April, the city staff presented to city council a capital improvement program for bicycling infrastructure. We called it the Minimum Grid. At that meeting, you approved the installation of sharrows on some of the segments of the network designated as bicycle boulevards. Thank you. They are working great. I can report to you that it's, it's made a huge difference. My fellow riders and I have seen a marked improvement in road courtesy. The sharrows seem very intuitive to both drivers and riders, and I've seen more riders getting off the sidewalk and riding on the road. Coupled with the regulatory signage that goes along with the bicycle boulevards, this may be the best educational tool we have, and we would love to see more. Ponte León Parkway is the final segment of the Ponte León Trail as presented last year. It was also designated as a bicycle boulevard. The cost of sharrows to improve this segment was $3,000, and that was presented by staff at the CIP. Additionally, the cost of sharrows on West Marion from Hibiscus, where it had bottlenecks from four lanes to two lanes west to Ponte León Parkway, is also approximately $3,000. These segments would add 1.1 miles to our bicycle network. As you know, Ponce is a very popular destination. It's a route used by residents and visitors from morning folks to the sundowners and a lot of yellow bikes in between. And with the redevelopment of Ponce Park and the Peace River Wildlife Center, certainly more will come. The information I have from last spring has Hibiscus to Da Vinci or the Colony Point Bridge scheduled for resurfacing this year. It would certainly be a good time to put down some shared lane markings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call, line up behind Harvey.
Again, Harvey Goldberg, just want to thank you again for appointing me to the commission. I'll do my best to serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more, we are adjourned.